I would like to bring the Albert Gallatin School Board work session to order.
Okay, thank you for attending February's work session. Let's start promptly. Our boys are traveling to Peters Township for a playoff game this evening. Boys basketball. Mr. DuPont and Mr. Hutchinson have to go on the road to head that way shortly. So we're going to start off with Mr. Hutchinson from the high school.
We received a $160,000 grant from Project Leadaway for grades three, four, five, and six, as well as the eighth grade. Dealing with STEM initiative, science, technology, and education, math. That's one thing that we're looking to do. I met with both teachers to implement it for the upcoming year in grades three through five, as well as eighth grade. That Safe to Say initiative, all sixth through 12th graders are trained. We discussed it. We're looking to have something for the parents. I just received, at this time, I think our district, since rolling it out, we've received 12 tips, anonymous. One, it should be 11 tips, the one lady or the one anonymous tip got cut off. So she then came back on and gave the same tip. I just got an update on my phone coming here. It says Pennsylvania received, "School Threat System Fields Nearly 5,000 Tips From Pennsylvania Schools In The First Month." So that's where that is going with Safe to Say. And last, the high school's working on Sapphire Park with scheduling piece. Which brings me to these three fine young men that are going to talk to you regarding some things at the high school. Aaron Hitchcock, Kyle Bellin over on the end, and Cole Rager are going to talk to you about a couple of things that they're thinking about doing to get the high school more of a student-centered, so that we can collaboratively work together to make, obviously, Albert Gallatin a better place to go to school for everybody. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron Hitchcock. He's going to lead us off first.
Hello. So we started a whole group called the Students for Change, and basically, we just want to help improve the school in any way we can. And one of these ways is actually through a mural project. And in the project, we would paint murals at different points in the high school. The project will be student-led with the help of willing faculty, and all work on the murals will be done after school hours. We're planning the murals first for the lower biochem hallway, followed by the history hallway and the lower main A hallway, as well as any other locations in the future. Students will design the murals, and each mural will reflect the subject of this reflective hallway. So like, say, for example, in the bio hall, it'll be bio-themed, and the history hall, history-themed. This project will not only liven up the school environment, but also give talented students a chance to demonstrate their artistic abilities and improve their school. Painting murals around the school would be a positive change on the school environment. According to the San Diego State University, various studies have shown that the school environment and atmosphere can have a clear influence on learning and the performance of both students and teachers. These murals would add color to the school and liven up various points of the school, improving the school's overall atmosphere and benefiting both faculty and students alike.
We wanted to bring it to your attention, just because of the idea. I know years back, we mentioned about painting, I think it was the front, and that was unacceptable. So I wanted to make sure that what we do and where we do it is okay with all of you. You know, obviously, as Aaron said, we'll look it over, we'll have a draft, and it'll reflect each of the hallways such as history, art, math, that end of it.
And another thing that I'd like to add is, the murals that we do have in the high school, there have been no issues with those, and they've actually, they've added to the high school, like, to how it looks and everything, so. I'll pass it on to Kyle and Cole.
All right. Albert Gallatin High School has significantly less elective classes and just regular classes in general than it used to have in the past. And part of this, part of this club is we want to bring back some things for the students based on the students' opinion. And we actually have a survey here for the students we want to put out in the high school for grades nine through 11, since the 12th graders are going to be graduating, to see what classes they would like to have for the future. And so say, like, the top few, the top three that are voted for, maybe a few of them can't actually be passed just due to scheduling purposes and stuff like that. But we could just work, we could work from there after we get, after we get hard data from the students of what they want. And if you allow us, I can give you two copies to show you what they look like.
And of course, bringing on the new classes would not only diversify the school along with the murals and allow students to take upon new challenges, but to open up their minds to new things. Because we used to have a lot of heavy opportunities. If you check on the back, there's, there's a list of classes that, I mean, it's filled with genetics, botany, zoology, driver's education, journalism, and so forth, of what we used to have and the opportunities that students used to be able to take to broaden their knowledge and to extend to where they would want to maybe study in the future, college, or maybe even not study, just to want to be curious about, or just to take one class. And adding on these classes would really provide new opportunities for the students and maybe even for the teachers to not feel locked down to specific classes.
And bringing back maybe his classes would be beneficial for students in the sense that things like driver's education with the driving portion. We have driver's theory, but you need both classes in order to get a discount on your car insurance. So that is something that would, that would really help out students entering the world. And another thing is the idea of just like, since society has shifted their focus more towards the core classes like math and science and English, schools have lost their creativity in terms of music, art, and then those types of classes. And this is the chance to bring some of those back for students and get them involved more, especially with actually like preschool activities, just like the New York Project. The New York Project would be after school, and that would be something to be kids involved more with their, with their school, rather than just feeling like a prison coming to school every day.
And we have social media to, to reach out to the students already, just to see their opinions on things. And people seem to already be very heavily open to the ideas that we've been offering. And just hearing people talk in school, some have gone to the bashing point, but the ones that really do care, they'll, they'll tell you how they feel and they'll just be like, "We need more opportunities." And they all end up on the same point of like, "What if we had more classes?" Or "What if the school was more bright?" And that's why we wanted to open up the doors.
Yes, so something I'd like to add is, we actually had a meeting for the Students for Change group, and we had over 100, like, on our signing sheet, we had around 80, but not everybody was able to get to the signing sheet. So we estimated there were around 100 to 120 students in the meeting, and that was without an overhead announcement. So students are very, like, students are willing to make change, and they're excited to. So we think projects like this, like with the mural project, with more electives, if there are ways to make the school more, like, to make the school more lively and to like, energize the school and actually like, get students involved.
And by getting some of this stuff improved, it's like, this, this club serves as, as like, a bridge between wanting to do something and actually doing something for, for the greater good for the school and with its, and its body. You guys have any questions for us?
Any questions about mural, about the electives?
When will the survey be going out?
Well, we'd like to get it out, definitely, maybe tomorrow or sometime this week. Just let it run for a few days, and then add, and then we'll come back to you guys with this data.
And the March meeting.
Right, yeah, we're planning on having another meeting for the group this week. So at that meeting, we would, we'd advertise and everything, so.
After a meeting with these guys a number of times, we would rather put out what the kids are interested in and see if we can create that atmosphere to free a teacher up. Obviously, if we don't have a teacher, it would be very difficult, and they're well aware of that end of it.
And most of the classes on that sheet, teachers do have allocations for it, it's just the fact that we have scheduling issues at the school, that maybe like, one teacher has a full schedule, and you couldn't take a teacher that's teaching all core classes out of those classes, teaching that and put them in for electives. And we understand that. So that's why, by putting this out and giving such a large variety of options, we can get like, data back on what are the top ones that could be possibilities.
And some of them are like, they're fully possible, we just haven't taken the initiative to add any of them, so.
Correct. And I, and I think after talking to these guys, obviously, they're making an impact now because this year is probably the biggest year that we had classes drafted up from teachers. So kudos to those, these guys.
Well, I believe we need to have the information early about adding the electives into the schedule.
Absolutely. We'll go back and look over the survey. We just wanted you all to be, to understand where we're going with your permission. We'll move forward, look at the survey, and put it out to the students.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
On another note, I passed out a paper that we reviewed with Joe Dolabach for the student delegates. He is on the way to the game. Therefore, I want you to look that over. That's kind of what we had. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. You don't have to, I don't have to, you don't have to look it over now, but that's for your information. Okay? Am I, did I miss you? Did I miss anybody?
I have a call to you here.
I got an extra one down. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. DuPont Athletics.
Yeah, just Mr. Peg elaborated on earlier, our boys' basketball team made a playoffs for the second straight year. They're on their way down to Peters Township now, play starts in the valley. The game starts at eight o'clock. We were able to secure a fan bus, so we had a lot of students on, a lot of school spirit. They had a little parade formed today in school, so things are starting to pick up. Our little basketball team won quite a few games this year, and the wrestling team finished at three and three, and we have sections next week. And your handout in your packet, our athletic supplies came back in. We came in under budget. If you have any questions on that, please let me know. And then I just have a few things. Also, Dr. Smith built a ball field, and we're going to secure that field again with their permission to use it for the spring and the fall at $2,500. And then also, the use of ACC for our freshman team at $1,000. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. DuPont? Okay, at this time, I know with the meeting for Mr. Hutchinson and Mr. DuPont to leave, we were going to go into an executive session for personnel and contract negotiations.
I think we'll probably be, this sheet's one of the big here for part of that, so we can get started and finish up at the end of our meeting with a separate executive session. I'm correct?
We can go into the final. And thank you for your patience. We will enter back into regular work session. And at this time, we'll go to our business manager to these sheets.
Hey, a couple of things before I get into the preliminary budget. Under financial F, we need to renew the prime policy. That's the policy to cover employee theft. That amount of $1,198, and it's been the same for several years to this point. Under financial H, we need to add two invoices from TNR roofing. One's for $30,375, the others for $87,400, and that will represent bond payment for them. That would be the roofing behind the school. I passed out an updated capital projects schedule for you. It's updated through this board meeting. And down at the bottom in green shows what our remaining projects funds are at this point. So there's $133,631.46 that still hasn't been earmarked for anything to spend yet. And I did want to point out, we did purchase metal detectors back in September, and in the meantime, we received a safety grant that will help cover that. So we are going to reimburse the capital projects fund for that money, so that could be used for something else now. And I also want to point out, we have the sewage cap-in fee for the high school in Deeber. That's $250,000. We will most likely pay that out in July or August. So if that's something you want to consider putting into the general fund, let me know. It's just going to make our numbers for the general fund even worse than what I'm going to show you next. So I'm going to do that. Just wanted to put it out there. Does anybody have any questions on that? If not, I'm going to move on to the summary that I put in front of me with all the changes. In the January meeting, we did not pass the resolution to not raise taxes above the index, so that put us in the preliminary budget process. Therefore, we have to submit a preliminary budget that includes proposed tax increases. So on this sheet that I passed out to you, what I will be submitting for this date is reflected in the far right column that says tax increase above the index. And I'll just go over this briefly. So top line, first brief line, is our audited fund balance as of June 30, 2018. That was $4.8 million. Our 1819 final budgeted revenues and final budgeted expenditures are reflected there with a decrease of a little over $2 million. So we're estimating at the end of June 30, 2019, a $2.7 million fund balance. 1820 preliminary budget revenues, as you can see going across, if there's no tax increase, there are $52.8 million. A tax increase to the index, $53.1 million. And a tax increase above the index would be $53.3 million. And our expenditures are $55,000, 819, 444. So in the orange, the June 30, 1920, the estimated fund balance, with no tax increase, it would be a deficit of $274,000. A tax increase to the index would be $23,968 fund balance. A tax increase above the index would give us a $235,411 fund balance. Mr. Peg and I listened to the Commonwealth Budget Seminar on the 13th. There are proposed increases to our basic end funding. I'll go a little bit more into detail about some of the proposed changes, but there is an increase of $406,746 that's proposed, and for special ed, $111,586. So if we do see those increases, the estimated fund balance at June 30, 2020, with no tax increase would be $244,272. The tax increase to the index would be $542,400, and above the index would be $753,743. So the potential tax revenue to be generated, the tax increase to the index would be $298,000, and above the index would be $509,471. The millage increase to the index would be .5077, above the index would be a total of .8679. Our total millage rates increase to the index would be 15.44270, and that's our 3.4% index. Above the index, it would be 15.80290, and a 5.81% increase. And down at the bottom, I'm showing what the impact would be on assessed values of $50,000 and $100,000. So if you had a $50,000 assessed value, an increase up to the 3.4% index would be a $25 increase for the year. If we go above the index, it's an additional $18 for a total of $43.41. For $100,000, it would be a $50 increase to the index. It would be an additional $36 above for a total of $86.80 for the year. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Just that, I, when you're talking about the increases, that is not a for-sure thing, correct? Because there are proposals like our governor, which have not even been voted on yet, so we cannot, we can't count that for sure.
Correct. And just because we are submitting this preliminary budget with these tax increases, it doesn't mean that you have to do that or that we will do it. It's just allowing us to get into the referendum exception process to be able to apply for exceptions if we need to use them.
It gives us options, yes, on that.
We're not tying our hands, we'll leave our options open.
And on your agenda, proposed agenda, section four, D and E are the two motions. I just want you to be aware that, again, what Ms. Sheets just said, it doesn't require you to do these, it gives you the opportunity to do them, including actually making application to PDE for an exception. You don't have to accept the exception. But you're running a deadline of March 7, drop deadline, to do this. As far as the preliminary budget, which is motion number D, that one is due February 20th, the night of our meeting. The exceptions, final deadline to notify PDE is March 7.
Yeah, we may have the correct figures. We're only eligible for a special ed exception, not the retirement exception this time. So we spent $2 million more than what our revenues were for the 1819, 40, is that correct? And that's, that's still an estimate to keep in mind. We haven't settled negotiations yet, so there may be figuring there that will change for salaries and benefits. And I will be working on a projection to see where we're actually going to come out at the end of the year. So if we can hold a budget meeting, I'm hoping to be able to have one before the next board meeting, and I'll have some updated figures for you for that. Okay, there aren't any other questions on the next page. This is the proposed basic education funding. So our proposed funding for 1920 is $25.6 million. The estimated amount that we're to receive for this year is $23.8, so it's a total proposed increase of $1.7 million. However, that $821,655 in the red, that is being folded into, it's folded in from a separate line item for the ready-to-learn block grant. So they're folding it into basic ed now, so it's not new money, it's just coming from another area. And that minimum teacher salary increase, the proposal is for minimum wage for teachers of $45,000. We were to receive additional money to help fund that of $534,011. None of those, none of that is guaranteed to be going through, and we would be offsetting wages and employer costs to offset that income. So the total new money that's proposed is $406,746, and it goes into our base amount, and some of that's from the core.
This is all way to the top.
None of it is etched in stone, and they are telling us that some of the numbers that are out there, they have been calculated on 16, 17 figures, so they will be updated and most likely will change.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheets. Any questions for Mrs. Sheets? Thank you, please. Okay, I have some questions here. Mr. Hutchinson left, Mrs. Hoffman's here, she had to leave. I do have Mr. Plisco and Mr. Dillo here from Northern South. Any questions for the middle school, either middle school presenters?
I do. I guess, Mr. Plisco, I'll ask you first. And this is referring to the special needs students. How many classes, how many co-teaching periods do you have? And you can estimate, because I know this is, you probably don't have this prepared at all. How many periods do you have a day of co-teaching with your special needs children?
I'm not saying the exact amount of periods, but...
Or how many times a day, or how many teachers you have doing it? Yes, second. Yeah, learning support, you know, every, all the support in normal, I recommend.
Yeah, I would say, I would say all learning support teachers do co-teach, I agree. And also, I would even say, our emotional support teacher also does push them to class as well, as well as every teacher. So we try to utilize every body that we have, you know.
Would it be like eight, nine, 10, less?
For instance, if I have a math teacher in eighth grade, they may co-teach three periods with that, with that teacher for that block period. If I have a teacher that's in co-teaching, any LA block might be going the same amount too, or maybe two classes and then a resource to, and stuff, so.
Jerry, would you be able to give information for Wednesday for us, how many periods of co-teaching are utilized throughout, you know, a typical day or...
Yeah, that wouldn't be very, I'd be very quick. Again, I just have to plug in my master's character.
Mr. Dillo, can you do the same, Mr. Dillo for South?
Do you know off the top of your head, maybe an estimation? How many at South?
I would say four to six classes.
And yeah, I'd like to have that to compare to schools.
I would say my number is higher, co-teaching, though.
It seems like we've been turning water on this issue, you know, and it, it needs to be addressed, that there is more learning support at North, and I think that's a general consensus, and I know there are special education people are here tonight, but it's a problem that we've been talking about, I think, for a year. And I agree with Mrs. Wayne, that it's an issue that needs to be addressed, and it definitely seems to be a lack. And I'm not saying that North has too many, but South needs more. So I, I'm sorry.
I did meet with Mr. Dillo, Mr. Plisco, Mrs. Donovan, Mrs. Brickich, and for the remainder of this year, we do have a special ed substitute teacher that we are going to utilize at South the three days a week that she's available to add some co-teaching in math. And is it math, any LA classes, Mr. Dillo, that we have looked at?
Just math, right.
Just math, yeah. The learning support where there were, where there was need to add some co-teaching in math classes where the, I believe it was sixth and eighth grade, seventh and eighth grade?
Six, seven, and eight.
Six, all three. So we, we are doing that, plan on doing that for the remainder of the year, and over the summer, we will look and break down everything at all schools to make sure we have enough special ed staff that we, you know, are fulfilling the need for co-teaching in the middle schools, as well as the elementarys.
At the middle schools, are they full inclusion teachers, or are they self-contained also?
Ours are, well, we do have some ELA blocks that are, they're full-time, basically, full-time classes. We also have classes that are basically co-taught then, so that's more or less our model at that door.
I mean, is there a teacher that that particular drop is just all full inclusion?
Yes, I do have, I do have three classes like that.
I mean, you have a teacher that just does inclusion all day, is what I'm asking.
I do have, I have teachers that do inclusion, which is just co-teaching.
All day.
Then I have teachers, teachers that also have all special needs students in one class as well.
So if you have any questions, would you stay and talk to the...
Absolutely.
So if you have any questions, would you stay and talk to the...
Absolutely.
Um, it is my, it is my goal, by the time the fall session starts of the next school year, that something, that it is addressed at South, that there is equality, that's all I'm asking for, that they have the same amount, they have the same amount of help that North has, because I still believe the half-a-day teachers at Smithfield should not be there, should be, should stay at South all day. I will say that till, I probably can't say that anymore, and I'd like to see it happen this year, but I, I just, I want this to be resolved for the upcoming new school year.
Has, has the substitute, the social education substitute, has that started already?
Um, I had to go up to see Mr. Dillo and the guidance counselor, was it Friday, Mr. Dillo?
Yes, sir.
And just to kind of make sure that we were having areas where we can utilize her, and I think she started out there today.
Yeah.
So she's going to report there three days a week, she's not available five days a week, you know, but, um, it's going to be as a day-to-day sub to help the teacher.
And Mrs. Sweeney, I'd like to add something. Whatever we're going to do, we need to do, we need to decide now, because we're in budget preparation, and if we need to figure in another position at South or whatever, we need to make sure that the money is in there to do that.
I agree with that, we need to set that money aside, because in September, I would like to see them have the adequate amount of staff and other special needs students at South.
Any other questions for Mr. Dillo or Mr. Plisco? Our elementary principals here, Dr. Witt, Mrs. Rosie, I know Mrs. Presmelensky couldn't be here tonight, she'll be here Wednesday, Mrs. Hod as well, she had to leave. Any questions for Mr. Rosie or Dr. Witt? Mrs. Rosie, is there something you wanted to, or an ELA, it could be a facilities request?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. Golden, food service, you got some good news to share with the board, I believe?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, we applied for equipment grants for seven of our eight buildings that are in this district. Thursday, we were notified that four of those grants will be awarded to Abregatton. Uh, we will be receiving equipment at Friendship, Smithfield, Northern South Middle School, and the equipment will be a coffee oven, which is a steamer convection oven, a better quality food and a faster process. I was questioned today, why didn't the high school receive theirs? I can't answer that, I wish they would have. We are in need of similar type of equipment there. However, very thankful for what we received. Spoke to Mr. Cheslow, once the money is awarded, we'll go ahead and get purchases made, and the install is also included in that grant, so we should have no off-pocket with this installations. And we'll move those pieces of equipment from those schools, we'll have those as backup, or perhaps maybe they can be moved to the high school to utilize there, so. Along with Abregatton, Union Town was the only other district in Fana County that was awarded equipment, so we're pretty proud of that. Um, I'm going to jump into summer feeding, because I know I've been talking a lot about it the past couple meetings. I do have a meeting tomorrow with other school districts in our area that offer summer feeding, and the Pittsburgh Community Food Bank to help get it up and going. Spoke with several administrators about starting the program. We would like to start this summer at Mason Town Elementary and also at the high school. We're working on some dates to get those actually solidified. We have some programs going on at Mason Town Elementary that this will be beneficial, and it would be open kitchens, I should say, that any student within our district would be eligible to come in for a free lunch during this summertime season off. So that's exciting news as well, because I know that's something we wanted to get off and start it. So we're going to start with two buildings, and we'll see how good and maybe expand from there. Um, myself, Mrs. Sheets, and Mr. Bowlen had a webinar with Premier Edge. Premier Edge is a point-of-sale system, also does nutritional analysis. Premier Edge works hand-in-hand with PDE on the audits that we receive every three years. What happens with the audit, right now, we have a program called NutriKids, it also has a nutritional analysis component. However, what we need to do in order to do PDE regulated is take that, take those figures and put them into Premier Edge, so it's kind of like a double, double work. Also with Premier Edge, we're currently using that program for our direct certification notifications from the state to get our free eligibility for students that are able to get that eligibility. I know we are CED, but we still use those grades to get the percentage, percentage from the CED community eligible provision, so that is very beneficial to us as well. I did include a quote in my packet for you guys to review. I spoke with Lindsay from Premier Edge this past week, and I told her I was presenting it to a board of, maybe something we look at. It is an increase from our current vendor, NutriKids, of approximately four thousand, three thousand dollars, about three thousand dollars more. Speaking with Craig from Mr. Bowlen, I know that it does interface with our new, is that right? So it does interface with that as well. I, I feel that it would be worth looking into further if not moving in that direction. I think it would be beneficial for the district. Sometimes what happens with direct certifications, they may be missed and mixed. With this, this gives records to our POS system, and it would be updated automatically to our POS system. Um, one other thing that I know that was long-winded tonight, um, at the high school, it was brought to my attention that our morning staff, current schedule for, four of our morning staff is coming in at six-thirty, we start serving breakfast at six forty-five. I know you guys work in kitchens at home, preparing breakfast, preparing the oven on, getting it heated up in fifteen minutes is almost impossible. So we have been late getting meals ready, hot meals, for those first students to come in. I suppose that we, I hate to use the term eliminate, I suppose we change the times of those positions, and by contract, what we would have to do is eliminate those positions and then change that to an earlier start time. I would suggest that two of those individuals come in at six o'clock, and the other two come at six thirty. That would give us an offset, that would allow the two folks to come in early, get the ovens ready, prepped, and ready to go for breakfast.
Okay, we can leave earlier, but Troy.
I'm sorry. Yeah, really, this is no addition to time, you know, the one position is currently six thirty to ten thirty, it would be six to ten. The other position is six thirty to one thirty, it would be six to one. So there's no addition to time, it's just adjusting the schedule.
That makes great sense.
Any questions for Troy? Thank you. Sergeant Harmon is here with...
That's Love's in your deck, calling.
Oh, sorry. Sergeant Harmon's here with a couple of our JROTC cadets, could you please come forward? Thank you for your patience, guys, we appreciate it, sorry for this at all.
So then, presumably you've got a proposal already for our five K run walk. I'm Lieutenant Carl Gaten Early.
I am, could that's XO Tyrell Thompson?
If you could let us know if there's any questions that you had for us, based on the proposal we gave to you, if there's anything that sparked your interest, anything that you're interested in, we'd like to advance it.
Can you guys elaborate in a couple minutes, summarize the five K run walk, all the things you want to propose, or the, you gave to the board?
Well, the five K run walk, what we're doing is, we are, we're doing it to raise money and to collect donations, non-personal items, we're going to be, benefit, the benefit's going to be going to the Abregatton Service Center for the Salvation Army, helping those who are in need, those who are suffering from hunger, suffering from poverty, this and the other. And what we are planning to do with our five K run walk is to get those monetary donations and those non-personal items, so that we can give it to those who are, and, as well as benefit those in the community here in the Abregatton School District, and those who are in support, giving them this five K run walk, it would benefit them physically, and they could help those who...
Okay, this is your community service project for the year?
Yes, sir.
And last year, their community service project is what you guys, you have the program here in Deepburn, Sweeney, correct?
Correct.
And I believe in their, in their proposal, they would be asking to utilize the track around the football field, as well as the cross-country course?
The cross-country course, yes.
And then, I believe, for like the Easter egg hunt, that grassy area between the buildhouse and the session center?
Yes, sir.
Basically, a football field area we'll use for that event, we plan on having a bunch of different activities for little kids. We want to send a packet out to all the elementary schools, both junior and high, to get the kids involved, to get them to school district, to give them an activity, something to do in addition to the five K run.
Okay, and you'll get the information out of all our elementary schools?
Correct, we need permission to send that letter, the letter was in the packet, I believe.
Would that be for free K and head start?
Correct. We are going to be placing the flyers at the YMCA and other local businesses for anybody in the community to participate. We have some community sponsors already that are interested in helping out, that they're willing to put flyers up there, place the business, so that preschool age kids can participate in.
Well, I think it's a wonderful idea, but to ask about security, will we, what will we, that, I mean, it is on Saturday, so what means will we...
We do have one weekend security guard at the high school, so I believe Chief would probably give us one additional security for that event, Chief?
Probably one.
Okay, along with, you have Sergeant Harmon and our cadets and your boosters helping out, correct?
And members of the Salvation Army, since we are, they are benefactor, they are willing to come in, volunteer their time to help, so we have a lot of adults willing to pitch in and take part of this activity, so it's going to be really a community event.
That is great, so I'm just going to be practical here, so cleanup will be taken by the cadet, correct?
By the entire unit, the cadet.
I think by, by contract, we're of course glad to have one to study there.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Sergeant Harmon, from the standpoint of the contractor, the work that's done down there, you mentioned the cross-country.
Yes.
Will the co-mess that's down there...
We are hopeful that it will be taken care of. We were just talking about it today, that we're going, if it got approved tonight, that we're going to go drive through and possibly talk to the contractors and see what their status will be by April 20.
I, I think it's, thank, thank you guys for the case.
I hope I'm able to come over and take a look.
Yeah, we have a lot of people getting really excited about this event, so.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Sergeant Harmon, and we really appreciate your efforts. Great work, thank you.
One other note, we did invite the other JRC programs from West Virginia, Maryland, and from Pennsylvania, that we regularly compete with, that other competitions, to ask them to come and participate, so we'll see if something can get involved, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, technology, Mr. Bowlen.
Good evening, everyone. I do not have anything in addition to my board report, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Um, is everything working out for you with the new program and stuff, or is everything going along?
Yes, yes, we, uh, we started the scheduling process for the high school, and we're actually going to be doing the middle schools as well. We had the first round of the training with the counselors, and working with Mr. Huston to set up the timeline with that, we're going to be getting the kids, the kids are going to go online and choose their courses for the upcoming year and get that process rolling, but everything's been smoothly on so far.
Now, I don't know if this question is for you, but do you copy yours, of that, there?
Yes, um, the, all of the old equipment has finally been picked up, the new machines have been in since, um, last month. Things have been doing very well, there was a couple little hiccups, but Ford has been very helpful with getting everything resolved quickly, it's no complaints.
Okay, good, I'm listening.
Mr. Bowlen, would you let the board know where we're at with the installation of the new cameras at Northern South Middle School?
Yes, uh, South is a little over ninety-five percent complete, we had one camera left to do, and I believe the guys came out last week and got that up and running, so we just have a little bit of cleanup there. South is in the mix, we're probably twenty-five percent, thirty percent with that building, I'm hoping to have that building done by the end of the week.
And if we, uh, cameras, the additional cameras for the high school, we get those cameras in, or what's the timeframe there?
Yes, we got about half of them installed, we did the primary troubled areas first, but then we kind of pushed that back to get North and South done first, and then we're going to circle around and finish the high school.
Okay, any, any questions for Mr. Bowlen? Thank you, Board. Mr. Park, transportation?
Good evening, Board, thank you, Mr. Tang. In addition to my board report, I've been working on a lot of homeless transportation over the course of the last three days, we've had five students seen homeless, and that's a close challenge, including three students from the Fraser School District, so there's quite a bit of transportation involved in that, but we've had the challenges, we have free, free routes to make it work, but all this coming smoothly, so if you don't have any questions, that's...
Any questions?
Hey, Bill, I was ill last meeting, I didn't, did you get the comparative cost on the fuel from last year to this year?
I didn't, I brought a copy with me, I'll bring it up to you.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other questions for Mr. Park? Let's see, May, Mr. Cheslow?
Good evening, Board. In my board packet, I stated that the lead testing has been done for all the drinking water at all schools. We have come out ahead on that one, we came out good, there is no lead or copper in any of our units. The asbestos work is almost finished up, hopefully by next meeting, I'll have that for us also. We've had a few power outages, a few water outages, a few electrical outages, but we've got through those, we've not missed any school. I'm working with K2 on getting the sewage project moving forward. I'm hoping by next board meeting to have all the paperwork here for board approval. We'll bid it out, I'm hoping to have everything done and completed by May's meeting, so we can approve that, and by, we can get started as soon as school was out, the end of May first of June. We did have today a small gas leak at North Middle School, we found, uh, found out where it was coming from, it was so minute, uh, you could hardly find it, and we did find it, but we will have a company coming in, it's a welded gas line, so we will be taking care of that this weekend, we will cut it out and replace the section. Other than that, in my board report, does the board have any questions for me?
I'm a little concerned with, when I was reading the report, about A.L. Wilson, the, we said here, there was no leak due to low gas, gas pressure, so I guess we're very fortunate that it was when it wasn't really, really cold.
Yeah, what happens is, is in fair chance, they have an issue with the gas lines over there, when it's very, very cold, they can't pump enough gas through the lines to provide gas to all the homes when their furnace is on, and what happens is, is A.L. Wilson, with the high-tech furnaces that are in there, they have a low gas pressure switch on, which if the gas pressure drops below a certain level, it'll shut the furnaces down. And I've been staying up on every night that we're in the teens, because I know that's going to happen, and I've been running over and resetting and keeping the buildings working and keep, trying to keep them warm. We had the same issue happen to us last year on New Year's Day, where the building dropped down to like forty-one degrees, we had a real issue there, I found, and I'm trying to keep ahead of it.
What also really bothers me is that, um, you call the gas company, and they responded with nothing they can do. Well, they put in the pipelines, right?
They put in the pipelines, they have the gas lines in and everything, but the transmission end of it, they can't pump enough gas through the lines that are there. end of it, they can't pump enough gas through the lines that are there. It's just a suck.
That just doesn't make sense. That, that just...
He was able to get on, is it the automated system you can check for?
Yes, it's the automated system.
And then he can tell, was able to get to the school and reset it. So the school didn't, we didn't have to cancel.
I mean, I understand the point of everything, but I'm just telling them that it's a brand-new school. I mean, how old is the school?
It's seven, eight years.
It could be more than seven or eight years old.
Yeah, we've had this issue with this school ever since it's been built.
I mean, that's just craziness to me, that you call the gas company and they respond that there's nothing they can do.
The line size is the line size is what it is.
And they put the line size in. Am I correct in that?
This is the main transmission line that comes in and feeds all of Fairchance. If the size doesn't come in, it's...
That just is crazy to me, too. I would think all the residents of Fairchance should have a complaint.
Most of their furnaces don't interact with this. This is the high-tech area that we're into, these high-tech furnaces, that will, when the gas pressure drops low like that, it just, it will not burn. It's unsafe for it to burn.
Okay. I mean, I know, I know it's nothing you can have control over, but it just, it just, it's a little worrisome to me.
Mr. Cheslow, I have a, have a question about snow removed.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, I got a phone call, but I can't remember specifically what school. I believe that it was Friendship Hill, but, but I'm not sure. The, the concerned individual said that snow was being plowed on one of the days that we had cancellation, but it was at the end of the day and I believe it was on a Friday. And the question was if there was no school and it was whatever time in the afternoon, why was it being plowed that late at all with temperatures above freezing over the weekend?
Understood, sir. Against my better judgment, I was asked to have it done for principals. We did have principals in the school to leave. I would have left it go, but I was asked to have it done, sir.
Thanks.
I work in the direction of the superintendent of the school board. The superintendent asked me to call them in and have the schools plowed, and I did, sir.
We were receiving calls from the principals at the elementarys, the middle schools, I can't remember which middle school called, but there was a lot of snow. They had secretaries, there were principals, there were, there was several inches of snow. And instead of having the contractors go out in the morning, because they are, we started that day off with a two-hour delay. They did, they already plowed in the morning early and we went from a two-hour delay to a cancellation. There was a significant amount of snow on the parking lots that, you know, we, I felt that it did need taken care of. So we did, we told them, don't go now, wait until about 2:00. It's supposed to stop snowing around 1:00 and take care of that. So we did have to go out and take care of the afternoon.
I have another question, too, but I don't know if you can answer this. Someone had mentioned to me that Georgia Township Supervisors were working on a four-day work week and that just concerns me. Now, I don't know if they are or not, but if something would happen on a Friday that the roads needed taking care of, what, what happens then?
They, they've always worked on a four-hour week at Georgia Township.
Four-day work week?
I'm sorry, a four-day week.
So they work 10-hour days? Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. But if there's snow, they do call their men out and they do off to treat the rest.
So then really, probably the residents of Georgia Township should look into that because are they not paying overtime then on those Fridays?
Well, like I said, if it snows, they do, we'll call them out and they work.
Or if anything would happen with our students, but we would need them, that, that's just, I find that strange.
I thought there's other townships that do that as well.
I do.
They are.
Yeah. Okay, I wasn't sure if I was getting you the right information, so I'm gonna pass you this.
Any other questions for Mr. Cheslow? See, Chief Valletti?
I have nothing for the board unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief. Some things under other administrative, talked to the Albert Galton Education Foundation. They are planning to have a character education breakfast on March 20th. Judy Bezepka, I met with Judy on a couple occasions, planning for that. I met with Larry Beazak, Mr. Pacroni, Mr. Golden. They're gonna utilize the high school cafeteria for the character education breakfast. Would like to get that on the agenda for Wednesday night to be approved, as well as the JROTCs, community service projects. So those things, are we okay with adding those to the agenda for Wednesday to be approved?
Those are good.
Okay. The character ed breakfast, they will be offering, you know, all three pags so they know exactly how much food they have to cook and prepare for. Through Title I, Mrs. Beazak is gonna give the students that show up a Dr. Seuss book. I believe part of the, part of the, is it Green Eggs and Ham, Mr. Boland?
Yes.
You know, so it is, so I think it's gonna be an exciting day. They can get pictures with the characters and I think it's great for our community and the kids to get involved and it also gives our high school students and the music department, you know, a sense of pride to share that with our younger students. Safe to Say, as Mr. Hutchinson stated, the mandated Safe to Say and August tip line has received, you know, over 5,000 tips in its first month and we have had numerous in our district. I've received in the 2:00 in the morning on a Saturday night, 6:00 in the morning on a Sunday morning. They come in during time, it goes to a call center. The call center then sends it to our team, which we have five people in our team to receive the tip. And then we have to have dialogue and comment to one another and let the Safe to Say call center know what we did to handle it and close it out. Mr. Hutchinson did provide training to all of our students at the high school, AG North and AG South. And what we wanted to do next is we want to coordinate a date to have a Safe to Say Something training for our parents, guardians, and hold at the high school or the auditorium or the cafeteria, wherever would be appropriate, depending on, I would say that for the auditorium. So we would like the parents to be aware, sort of train the parents, too, that they can use this tip line. So whenever we have that date solidified with Mr. Hutchinson and Chief, we can arrange that, we'll advertise it, send a note home on Wednesday folders. Well, I guess it's 6 through 12, so we can send the note home on Wednesday folders to the middle school. But that's just something that we want to also add to the Safe to Say. Lee, I had someone contact you about wanting to utilize building space here. Was that open or is that executive session?
No, that's open. They just want to use it for a evening or?
No, they wanted to put a program in here.
So they want a lease, long-term?
Yes.
If we get in to negotiate what our proposal would be to them, that should be executive, otherwise we're beginning to be taking the banking shot.
Okay, it's not getting into costs or anything, it's just they wanted to notify us that they are interested.
Yeah, you can do that.
Representative from Head Start that we've, that we've talked to last year, they are very interested in utilizing two or three of our classrooms to put Head Start here. I know we talked about this last year. They are wanting, in her words, very interested in utilizing space here. Would still like to work out something to utilize this space. There's a strong need in the community and they do not want to stay at the location they're in now. And they said they would rather lease this versus building something out of Route 21 of German Township.
So am I to understand if they would not, if it would not be agreeable with everyone if they weren't leasing their moving no matter what?
Their moving no matter what is what the lady told me. She said that they would prefer to be here. It's a great location, it's central part of the district and they would love to use this. So she was actually here, her, this evening and she wasn't put in while she texted me and said she had to leave. She wasn't gonna present that to the board herself and she left while we were in executive session, her. So I can get more information from her, with more permission to talk, you know, and see, you know, where, where it goes from here. Is that okay, my board?
I want to explore the idea of also moving the central balcony.
Yeah, I, Mr. Cheslow, I already spoke to Mr. Cheslow about renovating part of this building to see if we can get central office to fit here as well. So I do kind of have a plan I talked to Mr. Cheslow about and he is gonna get cost on. We were thinking if we took one, a classroom, we could turn it into three offices and we would need at least six of the classrooms. And we would also need, you know, a conference room and so, so I would have to work out how that would look.
Would you still have room for Head Start?
We would still have room for Head Start and the Dalphi and the business office.
We have what, seven rooms, right?
Right now?
Yeah.
There's roughly seven rooms. I think they're already used, or might be a couple more. So, but we could work that out, but we would need to work with the Dalphi and what part of the building they would have. So that, those are all things that we've looked at and Commissioner Cheslow is gonna be working on getting numbers and figures for what it would cost to renovate six classrooms into three offices apiece. So, okay? And...
What's everybody's thought on that?
Well, my, my feeling right now, I mean, I, I do think we should get some figures, but I don't know how, like, because I, I just see myself, like, walk into our administrative offices now, I have a place where someone will take care of me, that they're set up. And here, would we be sharing that office area? Does Adalphi use that, I'm sure, as their office area?
Well, we would...
And then, and then my other concern would be is, is Adalphi, if they wanted to grow, which if they had the need to grow, I would question that.
Well, those are things, I mean, I, I do think it's very worthwhile to explore because, you know, if we needed to use the office area that currently exists, Adalphi might be able to take the library and turn that into an office area. You know, so there are some options, you know, but, but, you know, if Adalphi did say that the ministry would like to use the kitchen and put a culinary program in here for their kids and do some other things. So, you know, those are things to consider. I think it's worthwhile looking into, it's cost-effective, if we can make it work, you know?
It's cost-effective, I agree with you, Mr....
And I could have more conversation with the Dalphi to see exactly what their plans are in the next few years because, you know, of the options that we want to keep up with the business office. So I could explore that and meet with them as well and get back to the board on how that conversation goes.
It's worth, it's definitely worth looking into. I feel like...
Sure. Yeah. I think the business office we have now, we do have a couple people in, kind of, that use the plazas. They have very small spaces and I've room for a guest to carry, you know, and so it would, it would, it might be very beneficial for us. That's all I have for open session. I have a number of things for executive session. Unless there's anything else for the board. Any questions for anybody?
In the future, if we have guests, can we do the other administrative person?
Yeah, we, I was planning on that, but then with the need to go into exec to get Mr. Hutchinson to explain and I just kind of overlooked Sergeant Harmon and just kind of forgot. So I, I, I usually do try to do that, but I apologize. Okay? Okay, that's the end of the open session. We, there is a need for executive session again for personnel.
And any possibly additional regarding collective work?
There may be, yes. It's mainly personnel. Okay. Take a five-minute break.